Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to note that we do have an interpreter here with interpreting services. And is he here going to speak? Go right ahead.
Buenas noches. Hoy tenemos servicio de interpretación. Si gustaría un intérprete durante el horario de comentario, estaría atrás. O si ocupa también un transmisor, también lo puedo proveer acá atrás. Gracias.
Thank you, sir. I would like to call this meeting to order for the December 20th, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Protem, I'll make an announcement first and then call the roll. In order to participate, excuse me one moment. In order to participate in the council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under public comment, or call 1-669-900-9128, and use webinar ID code number 86044232159. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the raise hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you're using a telephone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor or Mayor Protem and will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
And Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Present.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Okay, our first order of business is the annual presentation of the 2022 Light Sites Holiday Nights Award winners, and that's being given by Mr. Pasada.
Good evening, Mayor Protem. Nice to see you up there. Councilmembers, good evening. It's always a great time to bring forward the Light Sites Holiday Nights program. Recreation Division Manager Dennis Smitherman is going to help me out again this year, and we're going to give out our awards. So we prepared a nice little slideshow to kind of give everybody a little bit of a sample of what's out there. I want to take a moment, though, to thank Public Works Transit Division for arranging for the trolley to go around. It was pretty cool to hear the music and see the people riding in the trolley going around looking into all the lights around the city. So we have some categories that we use. And are we going to play the video first? Is it each one?
Each one.
Okay, so we'll go down the categories. First, for Best Decorated Rookie, first-time contest entry. Okay, and this is the Mees family. Are they present? North College? Are they here tonight? Yeah, let's give them a hand. Yeah, our TVs don't do too much justice in there. Then they're followed by the Country Christmas, Best Depiction of Western or Ranch-Style Holiday, and that's going to the Evans family on Estrada Place. Are the Evans family here? Yay! Come on up. Come on up, Evans family. I know it's a little crowded. Dennis will make his way back to you. So you're going to get a certificate, and then you're also going to get a yard sign to put out in front of your house, denoting that you won. So thank you very much for participating. I appreciate that. Homespun Holidays, our next category, the Best Depiction of Traditional Holidays at Home. And this is the Lopez family at 416 South Palisades Drive. Are the Lopez's here? Lopez family, anyone here? All right, thank you. The next one is California Dreaming, Spectacular Light Displays with Motion Lights, Music, and/or Animation. And that goes to the Mariscal family at 2443 Yalea Court. Are the Mariscals here? Wow. I'll actually take that one home because he's my across-the-court neighbor, so I'll take that over to his house. And it's an amazing house if you want to get by there and take a look, especially if you're a Star Wars fan, because he's very Star Wars-oriented. Let's see. Next, we're going to go to Simply Christmas, which is the Snyder family at 2926 Bunfield Drive. Are the Sniders here?
Present.
Present. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your presence. PG&E thanks you too, by the way. All at all dispense. Honorable Mention is the Griff family at 804 North College Drive. Are they present? Not present. You'll see theirs is the next one. Oh, that's it? Sorry, we don't have a picture of the honorable mentions, but go by 804 North College Drive, and you'll see this dome thing that they created in their front yard. Oh, there it is. It is there. There it is. Pretty cool. Do we have the next one, the Bertrand family, Honorable Mention at 1333 Ruby Court? And the next is Honorable Mention is the Cortez family at 436 Robel Court. And last, again, as I mentioned earlier, the trolley tours. We're going to give a big shout-out to Public Works and the Transit Division for making the trolley available so we could take our residents that were interested around and see the displays. There is a map available on the city's website. If any of you want to get a copy of that and take a look at this on your own, we usually do it Christmas Eve with my family, so it looks something like this. Feel free to get a copy and go out, take your family, and enjoy the holiday season. Mayor Protem, councilmembers, thank you very much for allowing us to bring this out again.
Thank you, Mr. Pasada.
Mayor.
That's good.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And what dates are, when it's going to end these trolley tours? From what date to what date?
The trolley tours will end this week. We had 206 spots available, all filled up.
Wow.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you all, and congratulations to everyone who participated. And thank you, guys, Alex and your team, for all the hard work that they do. And I think we have a presentation that's going to be given by Ms. Waterfield.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Every year, I have the honor of doing the Respect for Life Week. And the sad part about this being my last city council meeting, it'll be the sad part of being able to present the Respect for Life Week, but that's not going to stop me from representing life from the very conception to the very end. And so it is with great honor that I am able to give this proclamation. Whereas, over 35 years, the Central Coast Citizens for Family and Life have been celebrating Respect for Life in Santa Maria. And whereas, it is imperative that residents of the community defend human life at all ages and conditions of dependency, and protect the disabled, the handicap, and those defenseless in every way. And whereas, this year's Life Walk 2023 is scheduled for Sunday, January 15th, at 2:30 p.m. in the City Hall Courtyard, and Respect for Life Week is being celebrated January 15th through January 21st. And whereas, respect for life is a vital issue that invites full public awareness. Now therefore, Alice Ampatino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the week of January 15th through January 21st, '22, '23 as Respect for Life Week in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages full awareness of the issue. It's no secret that I have been pro-life all my life, and I've always said that if you're going to respect life outside the womb, you got to respect it inside the room. And one of my favorite verses in the Bible is Proverbs 6:16. "There are six things the Lord hates, no seven things he detests: hottie eyes, a lying tongue, and hands that kill innocent blood." In my opinion, the womb is such an innocent place where a child is being nurtured and being grown. And I consider that innocent by all innocence and everything. So I want to present this to John Lindgren, who has been the president of pro-life on the Central Coast for many, many years. And I really appreciate, John, all the work you have done to preserve life from conception.
Well, as much of a privilege as it is for you to do this, it's a privilege for me to accept this from you, Etta. We're going to miss you. I want to thank Mayor Patino as well, as she is staunchly pro-life, and we can rest assured that our city is in good hands. I also need these, don't I? Thank you, councilmembers. Let me first say Merry Christmas, and hope that you have a blessed New Year. We are again grateful and humbled by the council's acknowledgement in regards to how life needs to be respected and preserved from the moment of conception to the natural process of death. In proclaiming Respect for Life Week, that is exactly what you are doing, and that's exactly what you're saying. And we thank you for that. 2022 was a landmark year for our cause, as we witnessed an end to the unjust decision of Roe versus Wade in 1973. Certainly, the over 64 million babies who have died due to abortion since 1973 would consider it unjust, as they never had the opportunity to breathe. Regardless of one's view of women's rights versus babies' rights, most, if not all, abortions are performed when the baby's heartbeat is present. The heartbeat of an unborn baby can be detected as early as 21 days after conception. Most mothers do not know they are pregnant till after this period. To me, a heartbeat is important in deciding whether someone is alive or dead. At least, that is what a doctor notes when he gives the time at someone's death at the hospital. So if a heartbeat is significant in the decision of life and death outside the womb, what makes it so easy for the value of the heartbeat to be any less inside the womb? For every abortion, there are two victims, the mother, whose heart is broken, and the baby, whose heart is stopped. We, the community of life, love them both, and that is why we are out there on the sidewalks, to prevent future heartache and pain that abortion brings. We want to invite everyone to our annual walk called Life Walk on Sunday, January 15th, 2023. At 2:30 p.m., it's on the other side of the wall there in the City Hall Courtyard. And as usual, I invite the councilmembers who value life to speak at that event. This is an event that lets Santa Maria community know that life is precious, and we will proclaim it. In the Bible, there's a passage in Deuteronomy, Chapter 30, verse 19, that states, and this is God speaking through Moses, "I call heaven and earth as witnesses today against you, that I have set before you life and death, blessing and cursing. Therefore choose life, that both you and your descendants may live." So is God telling us to choose life because it benefit you and your descendants or children? Who are we to tell him no? I would like to bless the council with a token of our appreciation for this great honor. I would like to give each of you a lapel pin, which is indicative of the following story. Around 1970, physician Dr. Russell Sacco took a striking photo of a perfectly-formed feet in a 10-week unborn child. It was published worldwide. In 1974, it inspired Mrs. Virginia Evers to create the Precious Feet Lapel Pin, identical in size and shape to an unborn baby's feet at just 10 weeks after conception. They are used by literally millions of people worldwide to demonstrate the humanity of the unborn. They are precious. I want to thank you, and God bless you.
John, I'm sure that if the mayor were here, she would thank you for your efforts and the time over the years, and for the service that you provide to the community and the unborn.
Thank you so much. Thank you for saying that.
All right. Okay, the next matter is the certification of the canvas of the general municipal election. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title and the report?
The City Council received the certification of the 2022 General Municipal Election by the County Clerk Recorder, declare the results, and follow the standard procedures to reorganize the city council. Mayor Protem and councilmembers, on November 8th, the City of Santa Maria held its general municipal election to elect one member of the city council in District 3 and District 4. The election was consolidated with the statewide general election conducted by the County of Santa Barbara. The county clerk recorder had 30 days following the election to complete the ballot count and certify the election results. The election results were certified on December 7th and received by the clerk's office via email. The certified election results confirm that Gloria Soto was re-elected to the city council in District 3 to serve a four-year term, and Maribel Aguilar Hernandez has been newly elected to the city council to serve in District 4 for a four-year term. The city council must adopt a resolution accepting the county clerk recorder's certification of the election, and then follow the process for reorganizing the city council on the agenda. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions of the council.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any request to speak for this matter?
Not on this item, no, thank you.
Anybody else at the council level have anything they want to say?
Just want to see if there's no comments. I would like to make the motion of certify the canvas of general municipal election.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Cordero.
Aye. With that, we begin the process of reorganizing the city council. But first, I'd like to read a presentation, a proclamation to Councilwoman Waterfield. This is truly something that should be read by a friend, Alice Patino, to Ms. Waterfield, but also as a colleague up here on the dials. So in her absence, this truly comes from the heart of Mayor Patino and all of us up here that have had the pleasure of working with Ms. Waterfield for so many years. Whereas, Etta Waterfield has been a valuable member of the city council since 2014, and as a 37-year resident of the City of Santa Maria, has consistently been a contributor to the community. And whereas, Etta Waterfield was appointed to the Santa Maria City Planning Commission in 2003 and served for a total of 11 years, including three times as chair. And whereas, while on the city council, she advocated for public safety, economic development, including the Enos Ranch Project, affordable housing, senior resources, and activities for the quality of life issues, making the community more prosperous, and representing the city as regional boards. And whereas, Etta Waterfield, a list of community services ranged from being a founder and member and executive director of the nonprofit Santa Maria Police Council Incorporated, leader with the, I don't know if I've got enough breadth to read all these things she's done, the Economic Development Commission and the Economic Development Association, a former district representative for the state Senator Sam Blakesley, and the board member for the PCPA Foundation, the Santa Maria Fair Park, appointed twice by governors, the Salvation Army, and Marion Regional Medical Center Outreach Program. She also was an active member of the Four Square Church in Santa Maria. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor for the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims that Etta Waterfield is hereby recognized for her services and dedication to the residents of Santa Maria Valley, and the city wishes her and her family well in their future endeavors. And this is witnessed and signed by Mayor Alice Patino on the 20th day of December 2022. And before we get this to Etta, you know, we do things up here, and you know, we like to think that we're making the right decisions. And sometimes, we don't know what the final outcome is going to be. But Etta was involved, as all of us were, but Etta was involved in making decisions over many, many years that some of those decisions won't come to fruition for many years to come. And one of the last things that she leaves us with is the fact that we will be thanking her for the next four years because of her appointment of Maribel to the commission, which eventually brings Maribel onto the council with her experience and service to the city already. So she's kind of following the footsteps of Etta. So we owe her that thank you, that appreciation for all the dedication and all the decisions she's helped us to make that makes our system work up here. So with that, and I'm sure from the deepest part of Mayor Patino's heart, this is to you.
You know, they say that if you love what you do, you never work a day in your life. And I came to Santa Maria kicking and screaming. My husband had decided that we needed to be in California. We were living in Sedona. We were married with the children. And I'd never been away from my family or my friends. And he said, "But if we're going to make a living, sweetheart, we got to go someplace else in California." Santa Maria was the place. I said, "I will give you one year." I said, "If I can't do this, I'm going to go back to Sedona and everything I knew." And he goes, "Fair enough." Well, you know, I no sooner hit the road running, and the people of Santa Maria have been just such wonderful, wonderful people to me. And they have opened their arms up to my husband, to our children, given us many opportunities to do what our desires of our hearts are. But I also learned from a very young age with my father and my mother, who were just incredible, incredible parents. If we were poor growing up, we never knew it, because my parents never talked about what we didn't have. They talked about what we could have and what we could achieve, but it was going to come through hard persevering work. And when you're home and you've got a solid family, and you don't think about these things because mom and dad are there, and they make a home, a house, and love was everywhere. My dad, so many things I found out about my father when his best friend gave him the eulogy of this man who was just incredibly wonderful. I knew he was wonderful, but I did not know how much. My father was a bachelor until he was 40 years old. Met my mom, she was 20. And I tell this story, and I think it's wonderful, because when they got married, he moved her to the beautiful island of Alcatraz, where they lived for three years, because he worked for the federal prison bureaus. And mother loved San Francisco. And I said, "Mom," I go, "but what was the worst thing about living on Alcatraz?" Or, "What was the best thing about living on Alcatraz?" And she said, "You never had a dust." She goes, "Nothing got dusty at all whatsoever." But those two people created a family of five, who in turn ended up with 17 grandchildren, 23 great-grandchildren, and five great-great-grandchildren. But they showed us how to persevere, because they did it the same way. My dad always talked about America. He would say, "Mi hetha." He says, "We live in the best country in this world, and we have to treat this country with dignity." He said, "People need to assimilate into the American way of life. This is what's going to breathe life, continued life, into the United States of America." Him and his family, and my parents coming from Mexico, understood that so well. But it was never, it was never a place where they were martyrs. It was no, 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 you know, "pobre mi" at all whatsoever. It's like, "We're here. We have arrived. Let's put our sleeves up, and let's get to work." And that's what I found here in Santa Maria was a great, great city that breathed and lived that type of America, that bled red, white, and blue. And I pray that it continues to do it as well. You know what? It is the freedom that allows ordinary people to do extraordinary things in America. That's the America that I grew up in. That's the America that allowed a woman, who was my mother, with a sixth-grade education, because she was poor, but she always wanted to make sure everyone was fed, even the inmates that took care of our property, because we lived in a federal prison camp. She made them lunch all the time. And I got to tell you, we had the best roses. We had the best garden. We had everything, because they gave back. And my dad's racism rate with the inmates were just amazing, because he treated them like people. He let them know that, you know, they did wrong. They had to pay for their crimes, but they didn't have to hold on to it. They could be whatever they wanted to be in life. And a lot of them came back years later as successful business leaders and thanked him for that type of talking to. And this is where I want America to get back to. We got to get back to the basics of loving this country. I believe it was John F. Kennedy that said, "It's not what your country can do for you, but it's what you can do for your country." We need to get back to those fabulous words that that wonderful president said so many years ago in the 1960s, so that we can understand and open up our arms to everybody who comes. years ago in the 1960s, so that we can understand and open up our arms to everybody who comes and walks through these doors. Legal immigration was cut off from 1922 to 1965. I know this because my grandfather, my mother's father, who was not an American citizen, in 1965, he became one. And he died very, a very happy man for achieving what he did. He had already assimilated into this country, but he continued to love this country and taught us how to do it. I've had so many people in Santa Maria that gave me a chance to expand things that I didn't even know I had in myself. And when I went to work for the Economic Development Association, which was one of my first jobs here, a gentleman by the name of Bob Royster was this incredible man that, he was brilliant, he was brilliant. And he pushed me, and he pushed me, and he stretched me, because he knew there was something in there that needed to, needed to come out. And I'd talk to my dad, and I would say, you know, "Dad, you know, I just don't know if I can do this, I don't know if I can do that." I go, "It's really hard." And he would say, "They see something in you, mi hija, that I've always saw in you. I am so glad that people, that you're surrounded with people that allow you to exercise what's in you." Never did he ask me what color was their skin or what nationality they were. He says, "Character is what counts in everybody, and be sure that you understand that, no matter what, where in life that it may take you." And my dad was, he was completely right. So Bob Royster was this incredible man that gave me a chance. This is where I met the most incredible people of my life. And I'll never forget that when I went into this position as an executive secretary, the lady that was leaving told me there were three people on that board that you can never please. They're just, they'll just, you can never do anything right. They're just not, they're going to push you, they're not going to be happy with anything you did. They were Jim Deani, who's sitting in the family section with his wife Teresa, Dottie Lyons, who was Renfro at the time, and Dick Hume, who is now since gone. I set out to find what these three people were all about, because I've always said that if someone said that about me, I wish they would come and find out what I'm really like. That was the many, many blessings, the beginning of the many blessings that God had given me was in these three people, because they did. They pushed you, they stretched you, they wanted things done correctly, not lazy, but correctly. And they built character like it was just going out of style. It was absolutely wonderful. So, you know, I see a lot of young people in here, and when you find that person, and they actually want to take time to mentor you and encourage you and teach you, my gosh, grab it! Because you could go to any university in this world, and you could not get a better education from people who are genuinely concerned and want to make you better. That's, you know, to me, that was just gospel with everyone, and I just absolutely loved it. But I want to thank my husband so much for bringing me here. It was, I had no idea what God had in store for me. And my husband, who is a very brave, positive, encouraging man, he told me I could do more with my life if I wanted to do more, whatever I wanted to do. And he stood by me my whole entire time, everything I did in the, in the City of Santa Maria for the last 37 years. He was always right there. My children were right by my side, they were right there, too. I've got my daughter, Mandy, she's a nurse. My son is a lieutenant in the sheriff's department. My other daughter is a special ed teacher. It's, it's just something that you're just so proud of, and you know, you look back and you just think, "Oh, my Lord, you know, he was there every step of the way with me." And I think that's the best part, because my relationship with my Lord Jesus Christ grew in Santa Maria like nothing else did. And that's where I get my confidence from, because I know he's here with me, I know he's here with my family, I know his presence is always around us. You know, he taught us to be the light, and we need to be that light in this world. And I'm just so grateful, I am just so, I just feel like I've just been one of the most blessed persons ever to ever walk this earth, and it's because of my relationship with the Lord Jesus, and I don't think there's anything that could ever change that. And we've been through, my husband and I've been through a lot of hard times, not on our, not because of us, because of what other people have done to us. And, you know, we stood, we stood strong, we stood together, and we stood united. And I just want to tell you, Buck, that I love you with all my heart. And I fell in love with you 39 years ago, and that has grown more and more every day, and I am so excited for our future in Montana. Most people dream of what we get to do, but we're going to do it, and God's writing another chapter in our life. And I'm just so excited about this chapter, I'm so excited about where we're going and who we'll find, and the people over there that, that we can bless from what we've learned. And it's just going to be, you know, it's just, God is going to be leading the way every step of the way, as he always has, trusting in him. I always said, "You walk by faith, not by sight." And those little angel details, I know that they're just like, "Oh, Lord, don't give me Etta again, because it's just not going to, it's hard work." But I want to thank you so much. You're the love of my life, and we'll give it another 30, 40 years, because we're still young. So I want to thank everybody. It's been great. My colleagues up here, they've been very nice. You know, there are times that we would agree, there was times we wouldn't agree with things. But you know what? We never walked away mad or angry. We just understood each other and just let everyone do what they needed to do. Jason, thank you so much for being such a great city manager. You're my third city manager I had. I had Tim Ness, Rick Hayden, and you, and they've all been great. Tim Ness has just been a marvelous one that had taught me a lot of things. But you've worked very hard, you've worked very hard, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate you, Mark Schneider, Chief of Police, and the whole entire police department. You guys are strong, your weight carries heavy here in the City of Santa Maria. And I know that your, your purpose is to keep Santa Maria safe, and you've done a very good job. And all the department heads, I mean, I could just go all the way around. Chung has been amazing. He's just been, you know, gosh, poor guy. I know, I know that, only because I'm just recalling the conversations we've had, it's like, "Oh, God, it's Etta again." But thank you, Chung, you know, thank you for still liking me, I think. And Brett, you were an answer to prayer to your employees. Your employees cried out to the mayor and I, and we listened, and I'm proud that you stepped in, and I'm proud that your department is so extremely happy and content. And to all the employees out there that, you know, that makes Santa Maria strong, they're the backbone, they are the backbone. And so, just thank you, thank you, thank you, is all I can say. God bless each and every one of you. Have a very merry, merry Christmas and a wonderful new year. And I see Alex Seamus there, because he was part of the old regime that helped me along, too. And he doesn't realize how much he was an encourager and an influencer. And I could not be more prouder than Amadi Bell Hernandez, my wonderful planning commissioner. You're a smart lady, Amadi Bell. You understand the city, you're going to do wonderful things up here. And I just, I just thank God that you're here. So, and his, and her family, and little Natalie, the precious little Natalie. Thank you so very much. God bless you all.
Thank you. I think I'll just play you that tape when I leave, except for the part of falling in love with Buck. I'll get along with about everything else. Is there any comments from the council?
Councilwoman Waterfield, I wish you well in your next adventure. Thank you for your service to the City of Santa Maria. Even though we didn't always see eye to eye, I always have admired your strength and your convictions. It's, it's, it's been, it's been fun serving alongside you. Best wishes to you and your family.
Okay. Good. Etta, well, councilmember. Now, I just want to say, thank you for being open to have conversations, since I, you know, I still remember the first time we had our first conversation, I was on that side. And that's valuable, when somebody's open to have a conversation. And we actually, a lot of people told me, you guys, when I ran for office, that you will never please everybody, and I do respect that, you know, you stay for what you think is the right thing to do. So I think that's, I respect that. And we didn't agree on a lot of stuff, in others, we did. But something I admire about Santa Marians and people here is that, especially this volunteer work, the time that you invest in the community, that's Santa Maria style, obviously. And I really respect that you went out and, you know, you were up there in the community. So that talks really high up about you. So I wish you well, and to Buck, that was, that was a loudest speech, one of the greatest I've heard, so you guys, I wish you health, success, and just enjoy your time in Montana and all your family, and wish you the best.
Thank you. You know, all of our positions up here are temporary, and anytime somebody who's been your, well, for any period of time, but certainly as long as Ed has been with the city, there's a bit of sadness and concern when someone leaves, because she's not leaving anything else. Well, she's leaving Maribel, but she's taking all of her institutional knowledge with her. And I was talking to Maribel recently, and I said, "Well, you could, you know, don't forget Etta's phone number, and, you know, she's not going to be gone, she's not leaving the face of the earth. We can still call her, you can call her." And so there's a relationship there that, in a sort of a way, that Ed will continue to move, to continue to be here in some respect. And if you've never been to the community of Sedona, where she moved from, you need to go there. It is one of the most beautiful, beautiful communities, with the snow and the red rock. My wife and I took a trip there several years ago, and it's just absolutely fantastic. So we do have one speaker, Lori Tamora, did you want to speak?
Good evening, Lori Tamora, and would like to thanks Councilwoman Waterfield. I can be the last person to say that to you.
No, I'm going to say it again.
Oh, okay. You have been an instrumental part of what Santa Maria is, with your service in many organizations. But the last one has been involved with the Police Council, and the amount of effort that you've put into that organization, and the growth that has been experienced, and the things that we have been able to do for the police department, is going to be something that we will carry forward, and always think about you as our director. And please know that we take what you did seriously, and will continue forward. I also want to say that your time at the Planning Commission was really rough for me personally, and so thank you so much for everything you've done, and there are many people here today that have the same feelings for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. And when I, when I was on the Planning Commission, my face was on her dartboard. That's how rough it was. But you know what? We remained friends, and it was wonderful, and, you know? And they say I give everybody everything, right? Not really.
Thank you very much for your effort.
Okay. Finally, on behalf of Mayor Patino, we all have to thank Etta for all of her contributions, her friendship, her support, everything that she's given to this community, and wish her well in what her and Buck are going to do. They're going to learn a new exercise, and that's how to shovel snow. So, if the mayor were here, I'm sure she would speak much more eloquent and thank Etta over and over and over again, because they have not only a professional relationship, they have a true friendship that I'm sure goes deeper than many of us know and understand. So thank you, thank you very much on behalf of the citizens of Santa Maria, the council, council members that are not here anymore, and we need to cultivate more people that are willing to put themselves out there, as Ms. Waterfield has.
And with that, I do want to personally speak to the mayor, because she's not here, and whether she's listening now or she'll listen later, I just want to thank her for everything. She gave me the opportunity to be her planning commissioner. She took a chance on me as well. And I told her I couldn't do it, and she didn't listen to me, and she says, "You're going to do it." She goes, "That's just, she goes, "I don't want to hear anything else." And so that was that whole time of other, you know, people coming into my life, not, you know, telling me, "I can, I can, I can." And they were, they were absolutely right. So Madam Mayor, she's been a wonderful friend. I love Alice very much. I love her husband Johnny, and her kids, and her grandkids. They've just been such an instrumental part of my life here, and they always will be. And so, Madam Mayor, I love you, and we'll see each other soon.
Okay. I'd like to call a short recess, so that we can enjoy some, not yet? Or not yet? She's yelling. Okay. Oh, yes. Here's an opportunity to step down. She can't step down during the intermission? Okay, now, we call Maribel. Oh. Do you have anything you want to say, Gloria?
I'm going to announce this at this point. We're going to continue now with the installation of the elected officers and reorganize the City Council by having myself administer the oath of office to first Councilmember Soto, who was reelected to District Three. And I will administer her oath at this time. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay, my right hand.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, both foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that you will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Why don't you have a few comments?
Well, I'd like to start with gratitude. I am incredibly grateful to all of the volunteers who put in tireless hours to ensure this successful campaign and this successful election. I want to thank all of the supporters, supporters from here, Santa Maria, supporters from outside the area for believing in our vision for a thriving Santa Maria. I would like to thank our donors. But most importantly, I'd like to thank the largest special interest group in the city of Santa Maria. And they are the working families of our community. I am humbled by the voters of District 3 for entrusting me to serve another four years. And I am looking forward to continuing the work that we started in 2018 in ensuring that we have a thriving Santa Maria for our residents. I, we, we believe in a vision where folks, people, everyday Santamarians can play, live, and work here in our community. A Santa Maria where young people have a bright future and endless opportunities to succeed. And a community that uplifts its working-class families. And so I am incredibly honored, as I said, to serve another term. And much gratitude to everyone who made this win possible. Thank you. And I'd also like to thank my parents, who are not here today. But I want to express the love that I have for them for raising me to be the woman that I am today, a woman who believes in local government, who is willing to put in the work, and someone who wants to make life easier for others. And so, Mom, Dad, donde estén, gracias por todo su amor y su apoyo. Y veo que hay algunas personas que están aquí en representación de mi mamá. Pues muchas gracias por estar aquí apoyándonos. And I'd also like to share appreciation for my husband, my best friend, and Mary, if you're here, thank you so much for your support. Thank you. And of course, my labor brothers and sisters, thank you so much for all that you did.
Adam? Well, it's, looking forward to working with you, along you. And it's always, it's always interesting. I always say that there's no simple and council meeting, and quick council meeting. And I really appreciate that you, you know, you speak up. You want to get things done. And I'm looking forward to keep working together. And yeah, it's, keep having a lot of those debates that where we can learn from each other and keep doing what we think is the best for our constituents and for Santa Maria.
Okay. I would say that, I know that you can testify for me in saying this, but I mentioned to Gloria when she first got here that this is just a brief stop for her. And I really honestly believe that she's still standing on the original professional stepping stone, and she's got a long way to go. And where she goes from here and how far she goes, whether it all takes place in Santa Maria, I don't believe that any of us have seen the last or the last, the next four years is the last of Gloria Soto. You're going to see her in this community for years and years and years to come. So thank you very much, and let's press on with the next four years. Now?
Thank you.
Now, sir, Mayor Protem and council members, I all administer the oath of office to the newly-elected council member, Ms. Maribel Hernandez, who was elected to the 4th district. Mr. Hernandez, would you please come up and take your oath? If you wouldn't mind raising your right hand? Repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, both foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the seating arrangement here changes from time to time. And this is all pending Mayor Patino's assignments and changes and for who's going to sit where. So we welcome you. And thank you for putting yourself out here and doing what other people have done for years and years and years before you.
Thank you.
For over 100 years, since 1905.
Wow.
So. You want to say something?
Yes. First, I want to thank the voters of District 4. If it wasn't for all the voters, I wouldn't be here. Second, the volunteers who put in all the hours of walking. And my family in particular, who took the brunt of the election to all the families that helped me, to all my supporters. It was a really positive campaign. I am so proud of the campaign we ran. Somebody called it shiny. I'll take that all day. I was so proud of everyone. But most important, my family, who came to this country looking for a dream, and it came true. To see their daughter, you know, take an office in the city that we live in is really truly amazing, and it only happens in this country. So we do live in the best country in the world. The campaign was hard. It was grueling. And I will tell you one story that kind of will tell you everything. I pick up Natalie from school the day after the results come out, and people are saying, congratulations, congratulations, you won, congratulations. Natalie says, why are they telling you congratulations? I said, because we won. Now the hard work starts. She says, oh, no, my feet are going to hurt. And I said, don't worry, you don't have to walk for this part. Natalie walked with me, insisted on ringing doorbells and giving out the little palm card we would give. If I didn't let her do it, she would get mad. She was like, vote for my mom, vote for Maribel. That's why I'm doing it. I'm doing it for the future, the generation. You know, we live in a great city. We have great resources, and it's really for the future. Everyone knows, and I've told everybody about my vision for the city, that it's really about the youth, it's about the businesses, and it's about living in a safe city. And as I went and talked to people, everybody saw my vision, and they said, yeah, that's what we want. And so I'm super excited for the future the next four years will bring. And it is going to be a lot of hard work. I want to thank all my family who is here. They're filling up about half the room. The other people who are here for me, my friends, my colleagues. Kirk and Seamus is here. I'm just so excited, so thrilled. And I want to thank all the supporters for all the help they gave me. Thank you.
Well, we certainly owe a thank you and a congratulations to these three very special ladies, Eda, Gloria, and Maribel. And I certainly look forward to working with Maribel for the next two years at least. And we'll see where it goes from there. But it's a great honor to take a seat up here and sit where so many people and actually stand on the shoulders of people that sat in these chairs before us. So we, oh, you have anything you'd like to say?
Yeah. Welcome. Bienvenida. And I'm looking forward to working, you know, it's, whatever people told you that it was like to be in the council, it's way different. It's, I remember when I took this seat two years ago, and it's just, you're going to see a city in a different perspective, a bigger perspective, see issues that sometimes are not shared in, you know, in the highlights and everything. And there's a lot of people behind you that trust you and vote for you. So it's, they say that you run for reelection the day after you get elected because they're going to be, you know, looking after you, they're going to be following you. So just follow, follow, follow your values, follow what the community asks you, and you'll be safe and yeah, welcome on board.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hernandez, I am thrilled to welcome you to the city council. I look forward to working alongside you these next four years. And, you know, thank you for saying yes to serving our community.
Now, can we grab cookies?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Protem. We will take a short 15-minute recess for a reception to recognize the elected officers and to help yourselves to refreshments at the front of the chambers.
We'll return in about 15 minutes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is for public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
This time is reserved to accept public comment on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening, unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers, Mayor Protem. Speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak for them. And Mayor Protem Cordero, I have one speaker in chambers and none at this time on Zoom.
Okay. Isaac? Is he in the chambers? Isaac? Isaac Bern?
Berumen.
Berumen?
Berumen.
Berumen? Come on up.
Hello, members of the city council, city council members. My name is Isaac Berumen. And I'm a member that come into Santa Maria for over 40 years. Also advocate for small business since I got to Santa Maria. Like to small business grow, Spanish, English, doesn't matter. And Santa Maria has been growing since the last 40 years I've been here for the better, on housing, business. All that, and I want to congratulate reelection of Gloria Soto, also Maribel Hernandez for becoming a new member. All I can tell you is Santa Maria is a very welcome people. They welcomed me over 40 years ago. I got many businesses here. And even though I hear that city is pretty hard to be there in your position, all I can tell you is relax a little bit and talk to our people, which is our community. They're very helpful. So if you stress out something, talk to them. They have the answer for you. So all I can tell you is welcome. And Santa Maria is here to support you in any way we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Okay. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, do you have anything that you would like to comment on? Thank you. Moving to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, would you please read the item number six?
A routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only in the request of council members.
Does anybody have any items they'd like to pull? Any council members? No?
I had, well, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I'll just abstain.
Okay. If you saw it, you can, if you witnessed it, but that's fine.
Which item is that?
That'd be item 6B.
6B?
Yes.
6B.
Okay, there's no, no items pulled? You're going to pull one?
No.
Yes, 6B.
I was just.
6B? 6B, let's see, what is that?
Mayor Protem, if there aren't any comments or questions from the council, I'd like to move forward with a motion for approving the consent calendar with the exclusion of item 6B.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cordero?
Aye. Okay, having heard the motion and there's discussion.
We need to vote on 6B.
Okay, we need, yeah, okay, we need to do 6B separately. Approve the minutes for 6B.
I'll move.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6B on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Abstain.
Mayor Protem Cordero?
Aye. Okay, for the remaining items on the. Okay, for the remaining items on the consent agenda, do we vote on those now?
No, everything's been.
Okay.
We're not on seven.
Okay. Next, we have the presentation. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation from Greg Burns of Thorn Run Partners, the city's federal advocate, to approve an, an update on past, present, and future legislative actions.
Sir, it's been a while since I've seen you, so hello.
I appreciate that you recall your, your fond time in Washington.
He, he told me to say that.
Oh, okay. I thought I had made such an impression upon you.
You did.
Thank you. Well, well, thank you all. I'm sorry that the mayor's not here to join us. She's actually the one that I would know the, the, the best of all of you because she has spent the most time in Washington. But Mayor Protem, good to see you again. Thank you. And to the rest of you, I'm Greg Burns with Thorn Run Partners, and I work on your behalf in Washington, DC. I'm here to talk a little bit about all the things that we've done over the years in order to help inform you of, of all the good things we've done on behalf of the community. And also to talk a little bit about some of the work that we have yet to do. And also, at the same time, talk a little bit about what's going on in Washington and how it may impact the city in the future. So before I get into all of those details, I did want to just introduce, again, myself and my company, just so you have an idea of who we are. Because you'll, you'll see me and whatnot, but I am part of a larger lobbying firm. And we all are actively, you know, engaged on behalf of the city in a variety of ways that help inform the work that then I do on your behalf. So Thorn Run Partners, we were founded in 2010. We now are, we were actually founded with two people, and we're now over 40 people. We're the seventh largest firm in Washington, which is surprising even to me because when I joined there for, almost five years ago, actually, we were not even in the top 20. So we've grown quite a bit. Obviously, I'm proud of that. And, you know, hopefully, this echoes the fact, all the information on this slide echoes the rationale for why you all work with us, not only me, but, but our firm. You know, we really do bring a lot of sort of notoriety to your representation. We do represent about 440, excuse me, 245 clients throughout the country. Many of those, as I'll discuss in a moment, are in the non, excuse me, in the local government space. But we also have a whole host of other clients in other spaces as well. With respect to the, the practice that I'm most involved in, it's representing local governments. So very similar to the city of Santa Maria, we, we represent communities across the country. You can see all the states where we have clients. Our, our local government clients are about, actually, more than 40 across the country now. Some of those, actually, you all are almost an example of one of these that we've represented for as long as 20 years now. And we represent a real diverse set of communities, which gives us a, a real good anticipation and understanding of all the issues that communities like Santa Maria face, again, throughout the country. Over our careers, my colleagues and I have delivered on just behalf of local governments $3.5 billion, actually, a little bit more than that now because of the work of Congress last night. But we've also done a lot with respect to, to really important policy wins. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later, too. And, you know, obviously, you don't, you aren't successful in this job without having a lot of relationships within Washington. And certainly, we do bring that to bear on your behalf. So just with respect to me, Mayor Protem, obviously, we've met in the past, but I haven't met the rest of you. I've been doing this for now 20 years. Before that, I worked on Capitol Hill. And throughout my career, I've been fortunate enough to help clients, you know, secure more than $2 billion in federal funding. And actually, a pretty good chunk of that is on behalf of the city of Santa Maria. So I'll be proud to talk about that in a moment. I've actually worked on behalf of the city since 2006, which even amazes me. So that's, for me, that's actually encompassed a period of time where I've worked for three lobbying firms. I hope that Thorn Run is the last one I've ever worked for. We've had two mayors during that period of time, obviously, Mayor Patino and Mayor Lavignino. Now, we're on to the third city manager, and Jason, I know, is gonna stick around forever, too. So that number won't change. Two utilities directors, Mr. Springer and Mr. Sweet. And then, of course, we've had two members of Congress. Mayor Protem, when you came to DC, I'm sure you met with Congresswoman Capps?
Yes.
Who was there representing the city at the time. And now we have Congressman Carver Hall. And of course, I guess, I didn't put up how many senators we've had, but probably been three, I would guess, Boxer, Feinstein, and Padilla. So now we talk about what it is that we've done since 2006 on behalf of the city. And it's a lot. And, you know, I just want to, before I get into all this detail, I really do want to thank you all and for past councils and for all the city staff that I've ever worked with, just for the opportunity to represent the city. You know, obviously, we've kind of, in a way, grown up together, and I'm really proud of the work that we've done together, as I'll describe. And I'm, I'm proud of the relationship that we've maintained. So thank you for that. The, the biggest achievement, and really, one of the things that I've always been most proud about, was the, the efforts that we undertook early on in our work together, again, with, with Mayor, under Mayor Lavignino at the time, as well as, I guess this was Tim Ness and Rick Sweet were sort of spearheading from the staff level, was the, the effort to reconstruct the levee that protects the city from high flows from, in the Santa Maria River. So this is an effort that we worked with the Corps of Engineers on, but really, Senator Feinstein and Congresswoman Capps were our biggest champions in Washington, and they deserve a lot of credit for the work that they did on our behalf. Ultimately, we were able to get the, the levee completely reconstructed. That was about a $47 million project. And most importantly, we were able to do that at 100% federal expense. And I cannot tell you how unique that is. I have never achieved that on behalf of another client. In fact, I would never suggest that another client even try to achieve that. I mean, it, the, the possibility of it occurring is so remote that I would never suggest anyone else even attempt it. But we were able to do that because the initial design was proven to be deficient by the Army Corps of Engineers. Even with that acknowledgement that the design was deficient, we had to get the top person at the Army Corps of Engineers, who actually sits in the Pentagon, to approve it. It was a waiver for your project only. I mean, again, there is not another project that I'm aware of where they've done this and given 100% federal expense. So you nor, I believe, the operator of the levee is technically the Flood Control District in the county. And, you know, no one had to come up with any local money. So it was really tremendous, and I'm very proud of it. Another thing that people sort of forget is that because we got the levee fixed, the community members, your constituents, don't have to secure federal flood insurance. It means that they are not required to pay premiums of 800 to 1,200 or more per year to have flood insurance. So think about the savings that the community benefits from every year just by that deferred expense. It's really pretty tremendous. But that's not the only really significant achievement that we've had. So obviously, within the past, I don't know, 15 years or so now, I guess, Highway 101 was widened through Santa Maria. And one of the sticking points was actually the, the bridge. There was a lack of funding, if I recall. And I do apologize that some of this happened so long ago that even my memory is somewhat cloudy. But what happened is that that bridge widening needed to be done at roughly the same time that the initial stimulus bill was passed by Congress that was during the time of President Obama, after the 2008 economic decline. And things just worked out where the project was basically ready. Caltrans had a lot of additional money. This project needed the funding, and we were able to successfully convince all the relevant parties to fund the project. And I recall that we also were able to do the pedestrian or bike crossing as well, which was not something that was originally gonna be done because of the lack of funding. But we were able to, to make sure that that occurred as well. So again, another really significant project for the community. Now you think, oh, gosh, $500,000 for a community center. That seems so small. But at the time, it was a big deal that we were getting half a million dollars from Congress to help get the city, construct a community center. And that was an earmark that we, I think, got through Congresswoman Capps. The city more recently actually has gotten $6.6 million for six electric buses. That's a, a big improvement. The, the bus system, I think, has always been pretty effective at getting competitive grants from the federal government. So kudos to the team that has helped to manage that throughout the transit system's history. But that's certainly another thing that, that, that they and, and we're all proud of, I'm sure. We were able to get an earmark for the city library. That was 150, I mean, I'm having trouble reading that these days. $150,000 for the construction of that. And it's funny because the library's been built for so long, you think, you don't even realize there was federal funding that went into it. You can see the list of fire grants that we've been able to get over the years. I will say that the, the top one was $5.7 million for fire stations and also to staff the fire station with firefighters. Those grants no longer exist. So one of the things that we can't do, if anyone's thinking like, oh, we've got a new station that we need to build, that was a one-time-only grant opportunity. But the city was very successful in getting those funds. And there's a number of other fire-related grants that departments benefited from, including a couple of years ago, I know we were able to get one of the largest federal awards out of the program for that fiscal year for, I believe it was in, say, the aerial apparatus. So again, that was a big one. That was like one of the largest awards out of that grant program that year because the, the program funds very few vehicles. But again, we were able to convincingly make the case that, that your project was more worthy of those funds than anywhere else in the country. We've been able to get some money for the Intermodal Transit, Transportation Center, which was another earmark back in the day. A, a much smaller item that maybe Mr. Springer might kick me for, but we did at one point ask for money and technical assistance with respect to some integrated planning efforts that your utilities department has led. So that was one other effort that we worked on. And I think at that time, you were one of only five awardees across the country as well. Now, the next item says pending. And as of, you know, yesterday, even at 11:00 PM, that was still pending. But at about 11:30 PM Pacific last night, Congress did release a funding package for the fiscal year 2023, fiscal year, to say it again. And due to the work of Congressman Carver Hall, we were able to get $500,000 in that bill for the Japanese Community Center project. So that funding will be signed into law by the end of this week. But we just were able to get notification of that last night, as I mentioned, at about 11:30, when Congress finally released that final bill, and they're trying to wrap it up and, and head home for the year. So that's, that's a new win that we're pretty excited about. We, we had, I will say, we had hoped for a little bit more. You know, we got $500,000 and was certainly happy with that, but we are gonna work very closely with Mr. Carver Hall, as well as your senators, to, to go after some additional funding next year as well, maybe for that, but maybe for something else. I have a feeling that they're gonna be favorable towards our request in the future. So at the, at the end, I mentioned, none of this considers the millions in federal funding the city receives annually from federal formula programs. That's true. Programs like the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Program, these are programs that are formula funds that the city, city gets an annual allocation from these programs whenever Congress passes a budget. So you literally see millions of dollars in federal funding from Washington that comes through these formula programs as well. And those are also important. I didn't, I could never have listed, well, I could have listed it all, but it would have been way too much detail. So I didn't. But I think it's important that you all are aware that there's all this other stuff that also is coming to the community every year to help support you and your efforts. I mentioned earlier, policy items. So in terms of some of the myriad of legislative efforts that we work on, and there's a lot in here, I think I looked at only emails from about, about the past year to get this list. And again, we've been working together since 2006. So the list would be much, much, much longer. And the idea behind sharing this with you is to give you an idea that we're not just working to, to go after funding, but that we're constantly in dialogue with your staff to inform everyone about all the stuff that's happening in Washington and why it's important. So of course, we have, for instance, at the top, the implementation of the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, as well as the Inflation Reduction Act. These are big bills that Congress passed over the past two years that are really complicated and difficult to understand. And so what I try to do is inform your team as well as, you know, well, inform your team as, I, I was gonna say, as well as sometimes inform members of Congress and their staffs, but, you know, really focused on, on engaging with your team so that you all can hopefully get some funds from these bills. Remember that both of these bills are five-year bills. So you have multiple opportunities to go after funds. The city was not super active in seeking funds from, for instance, the infrastructure law during, during its first year of implementation. But that doesn't mean that you've missed out. There's gonna be four more years of opportunities. And I think there will be times in the future where we can seek some of those funds. Vandenberg has always been important to the community. It's an economic engine for this region. And so certainly, as the mission at Vandenberg has grown, we have spent time trying to ensure that federal legislation and, and also the development of the Space Force, frankly, recognizes the importance that Vandenberg plays in, in our nation's space defense. I mentioned the National Flood Insurance Program actually earlier when I talked about the levees. That's one of the items on here. Endangered Species Act reforms. There have been times where you'll have resource agencies in Washington that will suggest that we need to make and do things in the Santa Maria River in order to protect various fish species. So we're always concerned about, you know, that kind of thing, regulatory activities in Washington. You know, again, I could run through every single one of these, and they're all important. The point is to make it so that you're aware that there is a lot that we are doing with your staff on a day-to-day basis to really ensure that you are fully engaged in everything that Washington's doing, that you have a voice and a seat at the table. And that's, that's what we do on your behalf. So just real briefly, to talk about the election, I mean, obviously, you all are well aware, it's a big deal, first of all, that Republicans have retaken the House majority. I think that, you know, if you were a stalwart Republican, and you may have been disappointed by the election results, for instance, in November, because there was not sort of the red wave that people anticipated. But I, I think that that diminishes the importance of retaking the House majority. It means that they have control over the agenda as well as all the committees, and that's a big deal from a Washington perspective. So I do want to note that for people so that, you know, you appreciate that in a sense. Also, on the flip side, Democrats winning an additional seat in the Senate actually gives them a power that they didn't have for the past two years. When, when it was a 50-50 split with Senator Harris, excuse me, former Senator Harris, now Vice President Harris, breaking the ties, they, the Democrats in that body didn't have the authority to, to, to issue subpoenas or to be as aggressive as they would have liked to have been at the committee level. And now with that 51st vote, because they did win an additional vote in the Senate races, they will actually have more power. And that's gonna create an interesting sort of split screen dynamic where you have House Republicans saying one thing to a particular person that they may call before them, and then two days later, that same person may appear before a Senate committee, and the messaging will be totally different because that would be Democratic control. So Californians, I think, are gonna retain their sort of power in the speakership. I do think that Kevin McCarthy will win the, the race to become Speaker for the new Congress. I know that there's a lot of news, at least back east, about, you know, how that's going for him. There's some people in the Republican Party that are outspoken against him, but I do believe that he'll prevail. I would say it's a very hard job. I wouldn't necessarily wish it upon anyone, but he seems to want it. So I think it's his time to, to have that opportunity. One other message I want to leave you with is that actually, even, you know, we're about to enter an era of divided government. And obviously, we came out of an era of Democratic control, but, you know, it's, it's ebbed and flowed over the years. You know, I've been doing this now for you all since 2006, and I'm sure we've seen every iteration of control from, with one party to the next. But note that on the left column, these are all bipartisan accomplishments. So each one of these had some level of bipartisanship. And the items in the center column, actually, with the activity of last night, as well as some activity from the late last week, most of those items have actually moved over to the accomplishment side and will be signed into law by the end of this week. There's one bill that did not receive bipartisan support, but that did become law. That's the Inflation Reduction Act. So that's not listed. But again, I, I want to leave you all with the sense that there actually is quite a bit that happens in Washington that is positive for the country. Many people don't hear about it because of all the noise and the partisanship. But I'm hopeful and, and believe that that will continue even under the new Congress with this administration as well. This is probably way too much information to get into tonight, but I did want to just show it up there because, you know, we obviously are gonna see a different House majority, and they're gonna have a very different focus. If I were to point out one item. If I were to point out one item on this slide, it's under the oversight on the right, and it talks about sort of the the intent of Republicans to provide oversight with respect to the implementation of the bipartisan infrastructure law, the Inflation Reduction Act, as well as the American Rescue Plan, which occurred in relation to COVID. There there is very likely to be some attention paid to how those funds have been disseminated to local governments. I do believe that there will be some attention shown on some particular communities across the country to highlight what those in Congress may believe are sort of not the best uses for our federal funding. I don't necessarily think that there will be any attention shown on the City of Santa Maria's choices, but, you know, should that ever happen, I would certainly be there to defend you, and we would, you know, push back on those narratives. But again, I did want to note that because I do think it's important from a local government perspective. There are a lot of things, sure, happy to answer questions.
Yeah.
Just, can we go back to the?
Sure.
To later.
In regards to the earmark reform, what, how's that, can you tell us like a little bit about it?
Sure. Yeah, so actually, Republicans, just a few weeks ago, did vote within their conference in the House to allow earmarks again for the for the next two years. So they have mentioned that they may change the process a little bit from the past two years, but we do anticipate that they'll still have them. Many members in the Republican Party participate in the earmark process and have appreciated, you know, what they've been able to deliver for their communities. So I don't anticipate it's going to change a lot, but that's what that refers to. It it could face some tweaks, but that's okay. You know, we'll we'll manage it, and we'll work with your delegation, I think, to put forward some good projects on behalf of the city for the next year.
Thank you.
So in terms of what else we might watch for in 2023 and what's going to drive the agenda, these are some big-picture items that are going to sort of drive the agenda. The the top one is something you'll start to hear more about. It's called the debt ceiling. We have this weird nuance in Washington where, even though we we have many debts that we need to repay, we also arbitrarily place a limit on how much we can pay. So every couple of years or months, depending on how much they raise it by each time, Congress has to go and raise it. It becomes, at times, a difficult exercise, and it could be a difficult exercise this year, so you may hear more about that. I want to note the farm bill. I think that may be the second one over there. The farm bill has two important components. One is agriculture policy, which obviously is important to this region. The other is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, also known as SNAP or food stamps. Those two parts really make up the farm bill, and and both really, I think, have a an importance to the to this community and this region. And so we want to ensure that 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 bill goes through, and we want to ensure that it it sort of does what it needs to do for both those constituencies. But again, that's that's something that I, it needs to be done in this next year because the prior farm bill is expiring. There may be something on here that says immigration. Yes, there is. So immigration, for instance, is something that almost got over the finish line during this last Congress, and there's really three parts to that debate right now that that actually could see some movement in the future. One is what what they consider border security on the southern border, so that's all, you know, sort of redeveloping, you know, barricades or creating more more barriers to to entry. But the other two are, I think, are are important. One would be to ensure that those people that are here, as what we know as dreamers, are able to remain without any difficulty and are given a path to citizenship. And then two, farmworker reform is a big part of this. So those are the three parts. And again, I think those are things that that would be beneficial to resolving in this community, I believe. So I'm hopeful that that they can achieve bipartisan success on that in the next two years, and if not, that I I do believe that at some point, we will see immigration reform that at least addresses those three issues. And again, two of them, I think, are particularly important to a community like Santa Maria. Last but not least, local issues. So I just spoke about the local impacts of immigration. You know, we're going to continue to work on on new project submissions for the appropriations process, which would be earmarks. You know, drought is going to be, continue to be a big issue for California as a whole, and it's going to get a lot of attention in Washington, I think, you know, despite the the nice weather, or I shouldn't say nice, but the rain that you've had, from a a water perspective, it's been good so far. I can't imagine that the drought is all of a sudden going to disappear. So I think that's going to continue to be an issue. You know, we're going to work to support the the community and the city on on any grant submissions that go through or are, you know, put forward. And and I think I do mention SNAP funding up there as well. So again, I already referenced that. So these are, these are some of the things that are going to drive our our focus for the next year, and I look forward to continuing to work with you and and on your behalf, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight to inform you more about what we've been doing. But happy to answer any questions, and again, I thank you very much.
Any questions? I, not a question so much as just a comment. I I don't know whether you remember, but when we were talking about the levy, and I happen to live right close to that levy, and it's very important to us, and one of our fire stations is below the high-water line of that levy. So so it's very important that 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 was repaired. And you may or may not remember, but there was a flaw in the in it, and there was a section of the repair that was left out. And we were just flatly told when I was back there that, too bad. And it it made the the comment of, that's going to take an act of Congress, all the more important to me. I had never really thought, well, it really is. And we had to argue back and forth, and I don't know how much you were involved, but we ended up getting that paid for, too. And it, you know, in my opinion, it should have been anyways, but but we had to, we had to argue a little bit for it, so.
Right, that was called the Bradley Canyon portion, which, you're right. It wasn't identified in the original project. I can't explain why I'm not an engineer. But, you know, they they identified it after the fact, and we did have to fight for about another $10 million to get that done, and it was a, it was a pain. I mean, it was one of those things where you're like, you thought you had finished it, and then all of a sudden, they tell you, no, sorry. And actually, because we didn't finish that one section, the whole rest of the project is essentially irrelevant because the water would come in behind it. You know, it was, it was mind-boggling.
And it ultimately did. At one point, the water was coming in in that area and flooded the the south part of the city where all the county buildings are. And at the, at that time, the chief of police, when the flooding was going on, the chief of police and I went out to evaluate it, and he was not a happy guy because of all of the, all of the problems that were going with the brand spanking new county building that was out there, so.
Well, thankfully, we were able to get it rectified, and so it's all fixed now.
It's all done. So we certainly thank you very much. Is there anything else that you have to say to him at all, Mr. Stillwell? Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Greg.
Thank you.
We appreciate it and look forward to many more years of involvement and
Thank you.
and dealings with you. Maybe maybe I'll get the city to send me back there again, we'll see. Now we're at regular business.
And we're going to continue item 8A with the nomination and election of Mayor Protem.
We're going to table that and push it to the next meeting?
Yes.
I would just appoint it, but I think the mayor might not.
So we need to make a motion?
Yeah.
It would be appropriate to make a motion, because there is a general law.
Okay. I make, I move that we continue the nomination and election of Mayor Protem to January 16th, 17th meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, please call.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto. And Mayor Protem Cordero.
Aye. Okay, so that's tabled until the next, next meeting. Now we have a staff report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell?
No.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
AB.
Subdivision in lieu fees.
I'll read the title.
Yes.
The City Council will consider setting a, the 2023 values for raw land, land zoned as open space or public facilities, average household size, and subdivision in lieu fee. With Director Alex, Recreation Parks Director Alex Passada giving the report.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Protem. Councilmembers, new councilmembers, re-elected councilmembers, welcome. Tonight, the item before you is basically a regular occurrence. In the structure of the city, we have a fee structure for acquisition of parkland that's based on new development. The subdivision in lieu fee, as it's called in our municipal code, is referred to in state law as the Quimby Act, and that allows municipalities to set a mitigation fee for the acquisition of land and development of parks within their jurisdiction based on new residential development. So in the staff report before you, it talks a little bit about the background behind the Quimby Act, and it talks a little bit about the city's portion of it as a subdivision in lieu fee. One of the things that it it mentions in the second paragraph is that there's a choice in the municipal code that a developer can propose to pay a fee in lieu of dedicating land that's at the city's discretion, based on the on the need that the city happens to have at the time. So right now, the the population of the city is is roughly 110,000 people in in that realm. And so we have, if you did the math, there's a thing called the average household size, which is now just about a 3.7 persons per household. Do the math. We need about 370 acres of parkland in in the city. What we have on hand right now in our inventory of what we call accessible parkland, that's parkland that's actually in the city of Santa Maria, is about 240 acres. So there's a little bit of a deficit there that that we need to work on. The subdivision in lieu fee is one of the fees that allows us to address that that deficiency. The last time this council heard an update to the fee was in 2019. At that time, there was a lot of discussion about land value. We we spent several months investigating, getting new appraisals, having appraisal brought forward. We met with the development community. They proposed an appraisal. It came down to the City Council agreeing on on a land value of $390,000 an acre. That created, generated the fee. So there's a very complex, if you wanted to have some easy reading, you can read Chapter 11 of the Municipal Code, Section 9.5, and it'll explain the process that we go through to calculate the fee. But essentially, we take that number and apply these other elements to it, and it creates the the fee. So the fee that we have today is 2,300 and, let's see here. Sorry, wrong page. We're not proposing any changes to the to the appraised value of $390,000. That number seems to be pretty in the ballpark of things. We recently had another appraisal presented to us that had land value at about $400,000 an acre. So 390 is about in the ballpark. So we're, as from the staff perspective, we're recommending that we maintain that as as the number. We're also recommending that we look at an average household size of 3.75s per, 3.75 persons per household. And that's explained in in the resolution. So with those numbers, the fee would relatively remain the same. The problem that we have with the fee, the way it is structured today, is that it it doesn't generate enough money to acquire the land at the $390,000 an acre. And that's really the purpose behind the fee, so that when we work with a developer that has a project that's going to require parkland, that we can either purchase the land, have the funds in, you know, generated by that project to purchase the land, or give credits against the fees that they would be paying, and in turn, accept land from them. So that's another issue that we need to discuss at some point in time. But right now, we we don't want to fall behind. So the proposal here is that we took the Department of General Services estimate for construction costs and over 2000 and 2000 and 2020 and 2021. And we took that estimate and adjusted our fee accordingly. That that increase was a 16.2% increase over both years. It was a dramatic, you know, so in 2020, it was approximately 2.4, 2.7, somewhere in that realm. But in 2021, given everything that was going on in the economy, that jumped to 13.4%, I believe it was. That was, it was a big jump. So for us, we're no different, and actually, this, the government is is a little bit more strapped because we have to do everything prevailing wage. So when we're not collecting sufficient funds in in the program as it is, we don't want to fall behind. So the proposal that you're considering tonight is to increase the fee by the 16.2 2020 and 2021 construction cost index. The 2022 construction cost index won't be available until, probably until January or February. So we're trying to play a little bit of catch-up in this proposal, trying to ensure that we have some funds available to move forward on some of our projects that that we have in the mix right now. The negative side of not increasing the fee is certainly that, that, you know, back in 2019, the city did its leisure needs assessment. In that assessment, the people in the community were telling us very specifically what they wanted to see in the park system over the next five years. We are getting ready to redo that that study this next year. But some of the things that they mentioned that they wanted to see was being able to provide for more parks, more open space, more trails, neighborhood parks, and athletic facilities. And that has been kind of our our mantra. The council earlier in the year set its goals, and one of those goals was to create more recreational opportunities for the people in Santa Maria. This fee is one of those components that helps keep this mechanism moving forward of creating parks and and open-space land in the city. So again, for, to recap, the proposal, the recommendation from staff is that we look at, in the resolution, setting the average household size, that we look at maintaining the $390,000 an acre land value, and that we increase the fee based on the construction cost index by the 16.2%. And that's the staff recommendation, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Alex, and your whole team. Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, and I really, I really appreciate what your department, all of you guys do. I think it's a, from, from the District 1 residents, just wanted to extend a thank you, because it's, as you mentioned, is one of the, one of our constituents' priority. It's a, it's something very needed, and I I think that the 115,000 people, it's just, it's slow. I think that we are bigger than that. And so I have a couple of questions in regards. So according to the numbers, it says that the city should have 345 acres, you know, according to what's with the population, correct? But we do have 243.
Correct.
Like, okay. Also, and, oops. And you mentioned that the, the recommendations is to put an acre of land, the value to do, to the value of an acre in the city of $390,000 per acre. That's kind of like the recommendation?
That is correct. To back up just a little bit to your first comment, and and that is that the part of the, part of the resolution, in state law, the the average land is three acres per every 1,000 residents. Because we are deficit, state law allows the council to adopt a higher standard of five acres per thousand, and that is one of the recommendations in the, in the resolution. five acres per thousand, and that is one of the recommendations in the resolution. What that allows us to do is to move more quickly in getting us to the level where we need to be, as far as land to popular, or parkland to population. The second part is the $390,000 an acre. So, historically, and this is why we're in charging less of a fee, we had been working with the development community on an appraised value. And that appraised value was then negotiated to be brought down to one-third of a developed piece of land. If you can imagine that an acre of land at $390,000 is typically going to have houses built on it, and whatever your density is that's happening, that's how the land gets its value. In land that's either proposed to be open space or is zoned already for open space, our contention was that it's not worth the same amount of money because it's used as open space. You can't build houses on it, you can't use it for any other purpose because the planning commission has designated it as this, and the council has adopted it. So, that was the contention. In the last round that the council took, that one-third value was used to calculate the fee that you see at the $2,374, I think it is. So, that's the number that you see, and the reason that number is, that number is because of the one-third value of the appraised value. Like I said, it's something that we're going to have to, we're going to be challenged with over the next couple of years to make the fee appropriate, or come up with some other method in land valorization so that we can be fair to the developer and be fair to the residents of the city to get the parkland that they need.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam, I can reemphasize the point Mr. Pisada just made in answer, further answer the question council may have. So, the, well, the practical side of it, we're seeing that the appraised value, the land costs in the city are a lot higher than our fee structure is. And so, what you're seeing is there's soccer fields and parkland that the city wants to acquire, and we don't have the funding available through the in lieu fee to be able to acquire this parkland for the new residents who are here. And so, we have a deficit of parkland for the existing residents, and the new residents aren't paying their way to have the new parkland coming in. And so, we've been working, we're fortunate, for the example, with the soccer fields to get some funding from the county, some funding from the state. We'll continue to pursue that other funding, but, you know, it just continues to have us behind the eight ball, or the curveball, on being able to have the funding for parkland. So, one of the alternatives we could have listed here was what Mr. Pisada just mentioned of actually sticking to the 390,000 per acre. That number, as he mentioned, is discounted because open space is seen as less valuable than the full acreage, but we are seeing with the recent valuation of the soccer fields at 401,000 that the 390 is a pretty good estimate. So, we just would, so today, we're just recommending a modest change to that with the highlight that we still are not able to fund new park acquisitions to the extent that the community wants, the leisure needs assessment wants, or that the council's maps and general plan allocate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. Do we have any speakers on this?
Mayor Protam, we have one in the building, and at this moment, we have none on Zoom.
Well, it's Lori Tamora, she's in top of it.
We have one hand raised in Zoom.
Okay. Lori?
Good evening, Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts, and I'd like to make a couple of preamble statements first. I've been involved with the AB 1600 fee since 1993, and the city of Santa Maria has been very successful in the partnership between development and the growth of the city and providing the funds, the matching funds, to complete all of the infrastructure that has been built over the last almost 25, 30 years. And I think it's important that tonight, you also had within your package, the financial report of the monies that the city currently has from developer fees, and that was item 6H. And I hope that after this meeting, you go back and look at those numbers. A good example is Traffic has $33 million that the development community has paid into the city. Parks Department has about 400, or $7 million in their fund. There is a number of funds already here that the development community has paid, and again, that's this year. It's not the 25 years prior to that that they have been paying also to do infrastructure, interchanges, water and sewer, parks. So, I think the reason I bring that up is because I think the city should take breath and look at what's happening with fees in the city. Right now, a single-family home being built in the city of Santa Maria pays over $85,000 in developer fees. That's not grading the site, that's not putting in the roads, that's not paying builder, building permit fees. That is just the fees that are paid to the state water, Quimby, parks, schools, you go down the list, and that's what's paid off the top. And now, we're going to set an increase of 16%. All of those fees are going to go up again. And so, this is the first step, and with, I would like to suggest that this item be continued, and that we look at the whole picture of what developer fees are impacting the affordability of homes in the city. Because those developer fees, whether it's a 500 square, or, okay, I'm going to say 800 square foot apartment, or it's a 3,500 square foot house, they all pay fees to the city of Santa Maria. And some of these are flat rate fees, and some of these are by square foot. And I think the city council needs to understand the impact and the ramifications of these fees incrementally going up every year. I would like to also note, and I appreciate, Alex and I have gone toe-to-toe many times, if I could have just a few more moments. One of the things in regards to the Quimby report that has been provided is that the city of Santa Maria owns over, I believe, 14,000 acres south of the city. And that is, that's a piece of property that has quite a bit of active recreation on it that's not included in these numbers. So, you say that the park number is short in the city, but you have a resource that is highly used by the city of Santa Maria, and that's not included in these numbers. That's an investment that the city made for parkland and trails and everything else, and it should be included in these numbers because the city residents benefit from that. The other thing that I'm concerned about is setting a rate of 3.75 people per unit, because the most common units that are being built right now are studios and one bedrooms in apartments. And you're not going to find 3.75 people in those units. So, the thing that we want to be looking at is how is it being fair to set one number? I think it'd be more productive to set a number of different occupants per unit rather than just one flat unit number. And the last point I'd like to make, and I think Alex mentioned this just a moment ago, that neighborhood parks are important. Well, every project I'm working on right now has a neighborhood park within it. They have a clubhouse, a pool, tot lots, dog parks, all of these amenities. Those six community parks that are being built right now are built by the developer and maintained by the developer. They don't go on the city's park responsibilities. They're within those neighborhoods, and that's an asset, and there's many, many other clubhouses and community buildings that are not counted in this 245 acres that the city has because they're privately maintained and they were privately built. So, I think, and the request for continuing this item is to have the opportunity for the development community to come to you and say what they're doing to help with parks and recreation within the city, over and above just increasing these fees. So, I'm really proud of working with the development community, and really proud working with the city of Santa Maria on these issues. But I think the whole story needs to be told, not just one part. And that's why I'm hoping that we could defer this item until we look at all of the fees, all of the increases that will be coming, and hopefully, we can get some affordable housing in the city. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. Where do you stand with this, Alex?
Do we have other comments?
Yes. Speaker on Zoom with the phone number with the last three digits of 682. Are you available to speak?
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Protam and City Council. I'm Lindy Hatcher, speaking on behalf of the Home Builders Association of the Central Coast. We echo Lori's comments. This city always contacts the development community before raising fees, and that did not happen. The city AB 1600 fees are usually approved in June and go into effect July 1st. We need a certain level of predictability and certainty to move projects forward, and this sets a precedent, raising them mid-year like this. We ask you to postpone this discussion until after speaking with the development community. Let us work together with you for a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, sir, I believe that that was the same person who had their hand up. So, I think we're good on Zoom.
Alex, do you have anything else to say to that?
Thank you, Mayor Protam, council members. So, to be clear, this is the subdivision in lieu fee. It's not part of the Quimby, pardon me, it's not part of the growth mitigation fee program. That is something that the Public Works Department Engineering Division will work on and will bring to you at a later date. There is a park component to growth mitigation. I believe Mr. Mura mentioned that in her presentation. But there's no, typically, the subdivision in lieu fee comes to the council right about at the end of the year, maybe in January each year, when we want, when we have a change or we would like to make a change. So, this is not out of timing. This is typical for our presentation of this particular item.
And if I understood you correctly, we're actually behind right now?
Yes.
Is that correct? We are not keeping pace with the needs of that particular budgetary item. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Anything else? Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, the question that, or the statement that Lori made regarding the number that we didn't include in the calculations, in particular as well, the 3.75 persons per residence, I think that number is higher as well because we have more people living in one-bedroom apartments.
Yes, and we typically take the number that's provided by the Department of Housing, California Department of Housing. We don't create that number, so that's the number that we see right now coming out of that department.
So, I have a question for the city manager and for the attorney. Are we able to change that number to be more reflective of what is happening in our city?
Yes, ma'am. The growth, or the fee should be set at a local level based on local conditions. And again, it's the council's discretion based on your own knowledge within the guidelines. Additionally, as Director Pisada said, the development community is right now getting a 60% discount from the actual cost, which would be about $7,200 as opposed to the $2,700 that is currently being charged, if my math is correct.
Correct.
And I'm particularly sensitive to that issue because when you develop a one-bedroom apartment, let's say five people move in, you have children who impact the school, who impact the local parks, there is impact. So, I get that that goes with the growth impact mitigation fees, but I think that we do need to look at that in the larger scale and increase the number that we're using for 3.75, as the city attorney stated. I do think it needs to be inclusive of what the local standards are.
If it's higher, what, how would that be reflected in the 16.2 increase?
It would go up.
Yes. I mean, it's an operation of math. You just plug in the number, and the formula will kick it out. As I mentioned earlier, we know that we're deficit right now, and that's one of the things that we certainly want to meet with the development community if we're going to move to trying to achieve anything different than what I'm proposing to you tonight, because it is a major impact. Lori and I have spoken about it. It's, we, as a city, we certainly don't want to stifle development, and there's a potential for that to happen if the fees go, you know, dramatically high.
I would be...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I would be in favor of continuing this item so that we can get the development community's input and actually use a number that is reflective of our local standards.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So, something that we have to keep in mind is that this is more than city land or city acres, it's the community's, the Santa Mariaans' land. So, we're just administrators of that. And I think that we got to be really mindful of how we set the price on something so viable, and just giving, basically just giving this kind of discounts is something that I've said it before in a couple of council meetings, that it's not, it's something I would not go for. I would think that we need to, we need to be setting that standard. So, that gap just doesn't exist because at the end of the day, it's the discount that is going to be paid by our constituents. So, I would say that I do agree with a council member.
Maribel.
That in regards, yeah, definitely by each room, more than, I mean, I think that that number is not reflective of Santa Maria. So, I would support to look into the reality and see if we can increase that.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
I am in favor of adopting the resolution as presented by city staff with, with like, with the clause to also come and revisit so that we can see whether the allocation that we currently have provided by Department of Housing, whether or not we, there is wiggle room for us to increase after we speak with the developer community, but in the meantime, I'd like to move forward with making a motion. So, I still move to adopt the resolution as recommended by city staff. With a revisit in the future for adjustments with input from the developer community.
So, my question, how would that look like in the, it's basically a raising...
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I mean, I would like to understand a little bit more about the...
Yeah, so, you want more, you want to understand the motion?
Yeah.
So, my motion is basically to move forward with the recommendation as presented for city staff, from city staff, so that we're not further behind in these, so we're not further behind in these costs. And in agreement with Councilwoman Hernandez and with you, Councilmember Escobedo, I do believe that it is imperative that we, with the number of folks living in single-family units or even studio apartments, coming back and revisiting the subdivision in lieu fees to ensure that we are setting a value that is, or setting the average household size with how it's truly relative within the city of Santa Maria. Like, it sounds like we agree that it's more than what is presented by city staff based on the conversation that is we're having here on the dais. And so, having said that, we should move forward with the recommendation as presented while also giving city staff time to speak with developers and make adjustments if needed to the actual size of, or what we believe the right size is for us here.
So, right now, in terms of persons per resident, would we keep that, right now, what's the number?
3.74, and that would be the number in... 3.74, and that would be the number in the resolution?
That would be added, okay, so I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? I do have a question for you, Alex. If, if the motion carries, you still plan on going to the developers and discussing issue?
Yes.
Okay, and if the motion fails, you still plan on going to the developers and discussing these issues?
Yes.
So, okay, but, but Ms. Soto's, Ms. Soto's motion puts us in the driving suit sooner, in the driving seat sooner, gets us going sooner, and, and we can make up this deficit, hopefully, in, in, in a timely manner. That, did I get that correct?
I think the distinction would be direction from council to work with the development community to reexamine the bases of the formula and come back to council. And then the parallel, and I think that was Mr. Posada's intent that we expressed as staff. And then the parallel process are the AB 1600 fees, which we're analyzing. We'll return, we'll talk with the development community, bring those to you. And those, we're also reviewing for updated numbers and assuring that we're able to meet the infrastructure needs such as infill development that we've been struggling to be able to fund.
And I guess my, my aim would be to make sure that, that there's additional dialogue with the, with the developers, and that we get this matter moving forward as quickly as we can. That would be my hope and, and desire. And I think the mayor would go with that as well, but she's not here. Unless she wants to call in.
So she would move forward with...
We have a motion, let's...
In a second.
Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Soto?
Hi.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Hi.
Councilmember Hernandez?
No.
Council, uh, Mayor Protem Cordero?
Hi. Motion carries.
Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it? We got one more? We got Mr. Stillwell's...
Dog and Ponies.
Story?
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem Cordero.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. I'll be back.
We know.
So upcoming agenda items is the, well, so my report tonight focused on upcoming agenda items. With the council's action tonight, we've canceled the meeting from January 3rd. So the next meeting of the city council is January 17. Number of items on the agenda include the Hometown Heroes presentation and Business of the Month. And then we also will have the Brad, or we're scheduled to have the Bradley Square parking permit for the council's consideration. We have a grant for tobacco sales enforcement, a new program we hope to initiate with council's approval, your annual board appointments and outside agency board appointments. And Mayor Protem, based on direction tonight. That concludes my report.
Gloria?
No reportable items, Mayor Protem.
No reports.
So our last meeting was November 15. Long time ago. Yeah. So, okay, let me see. So on November 17, I had the pleasure of being the emcee for the Altrusa raffle at the mall. It was a lot of fun.
I didn't win.
I know, I was trying to, to send everybody. A lot of people disappointed. But it was, I was happy to see that there were a couple of people that were actually on the, on site. So no, everybody was angry. And on, on the 18th, I attended Veterans Rhythm and Core Graduation Ceremony held by Echo Group of Band of Brothers. On November 19, I put my shoes and I ran the Turkey Trot Fun Run and 5K, and congratulations, was a lot of fun. And a lot of kids running, so that was, that was great. And on the 20th, I attend the Basket Brigade Event in the morning. And in the afternoon, I attend the NICE, I hopefully I pronounced it correctly, NICE Grand Opening, the second, second business on 1767 North, South Broadway. On the 22nd, I did a tour to the Santa Maria Barbecue Outfeeders Business. Awesome, and thank you, Richen Dan and his dad for, for all the information. It's just, it's great to hear all this passion about what they do. That's, that was great. On November 23rd, I attended Thanksgiving Distribution Event for the Food Bank. A lot of people since, I believe we start at 10:00 in the morning. There were people waiting at 5:00 AM. Just, that was, and there's another one coming up. What else, what else? On the, on November 29, I attended Mobile Home Park Residents Meeting. Well, virtually, yeah. What else, what I did? On the December 3rd, I attend the barbecue fundraiser put together by the Fire Department. And also, I attend the Lotteria Day Game of the, of Extreme Electronics, which is a business on West Main Street. What else, what else? There was a lot of stuff. On the 7th, I attended Freedom Monument Ceremony at the Maldonado Center. It was a great, it was just getting bigger and bigger. It just, a lot of great energy and it was, it was a very nice day. A lot of mixed feelings, it just gets you. I mean, sorry, really good, good feelings and just be grateful of these great, you know, the people that have sacrificed their lives for, so we can enjoy their rights and the freedom that we, we have. And on the 8th, I attended Christmas Mixer that was put together by Edgar Carey and Sofia Laris and the Fallas Building. Sorry, the, sorry, the Altrusa Raffle Event was on the 11th. And on the 12th, on the 12th, I attended Downtown Redevelopment Meeting at the City Library. On the 13th, I attend the badge pinning and welcome ceremony. Congratulations to the new cadets and the dispatcher. What else, what else? On the 15th, I attend the, I was judge at the Judge Holiday Team Doors at the Boys and Girls Club. It was a tough one, really tough, but it was fun. And, what else? And, yeah, on the 19th, yesterday, I attend the Boys and Girls Club Dinner, Family Christmas at this, my return club, we put together for Boys and Girls Club kids. So we have a dinner and we have as, as Boys and Girls Club members to come and have some, some, you know, have some presents, have fun. We get Santa Claus. And that's, that's what I did this couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, the end of last month and first part of this month, I attended something that really wasn't part of the council. I attended the teachers' conference down in San Diego. And it was surprising how, it was from my wife's position with the school board. And it's surprising after, how all the conversations was almost like we were, we would have the same conversations that the city council made, it's just the same stuff. You know, issues with the Brown Act and whatnot. It was just kind of interesting to see the parallels between the two boards. On the 7th, I was also at the, honoring the veterans at the memorial, for the memorial over here at Maldonado Center. And I had written a letter to the Times asking for some attendance and put it in the magazine over at the Oaks. And so there was quite a show there, and the mayor was unable to make it. So I spoke at that. And it, as Councilman Escobedo said, it's, it's downright emotional, do you think about it? And, and I know that as little as just a few years ago, we lost some people in the war. One of the, one of the gentlemen that works down at the Oaks lost his son. So on the, on the 12th, I was at the Downtown Redevelopment Meeting, joint meeting with the, with the commission and the city council. And then as late as the 13th, I was at the badge pinning that Mr. Escobedo spoke of. It's, it's interesting to see that we're, that the chief is finally getting more and more people into fill some of those positions. And I keep telling people when they ask about it, from the time that a young off, a young person fills out that application until you throw them the keys to the car and they're out there on their own, it's about, about a year, isn't it? Somewhere close to that? It's, it's, it's a long time. It's not something you can say, well, this, you're going to be operating this particular bulldozer and, you know, you, they get a few lessons and they're off on their own. And police and fire are altogether different. It's not, it's not an easy transition. So it is very time-consuming. But it was, it was great to see that we're getting some, some additional personnel. As late as today, I was at the meeting with the CCWA. And it, it's, has to do with the power and the renewable energy. And the gentleman, David, is, is finally, he's retired now. And they're, they've picked up a new, a new CEO. So you'll probably be hearing from him real soon. And I think that's about it for me. The, the meeting was quick and kind of an emergency. We did it all virtual and it was well-attended. At least we had a quorum. And that's it. Is anything else? Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks.
Merry Christmas, everybody.